We're reconvening as Wycomico County Council in an open work session, legislative session 2023-16 for August 15, 2023. First item on the work, open work session is the meeting with the Wycomico County Board of Education.
Good afternoon.
Superintendent, staff, and everyone.
We will.
Included.
I'll start with Mr. Malone.
Right, I'm Gene Malone. I'm chairman of the Wycomico County School Board, and I have with me one member of the school board, Dr. Bonnie Ennis.
Okay.
Vince Pavick, Director of Human Resources and Employee Relations for the Board.
Michael Stoffler, Superintendent.
Brian Rigger, Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Kim Miles, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Services.
Rick Burgs, Chief Academic Officer.
Appreciate you all taking the time to come in. We do. We will give you the floor. I know you've been kind enough to give us eight bullet points that you'd like to review, and that's great for us, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Good afternoon to all council members. Thank you for the invitation. You can see in front of you is the agenda. A number of those items were items that the council requested that we put on the agenda, and then we also included some other items that we wanted to highlight for the council this afternoon. Starting with the FY 2324 initiatives. These are stemming from the superintendent's entry plan from last school year. All of the feedback that we got from the community, the stakeholders, teachers, parents, and students, as well as the community members and organizations. We put that together and have created some initiatives and priorities for our school system that are, we're going to outline here today for you. First and foremost, our Board of Education has recently passed a new code of conduct policy, and we have a new procedure to coincide with that. We're excited about that, and that's something that we've been rolling out through Mrs. Miles and her team in student services over the summer with all of our administrators. We're looking at two main areas. One, obviously, we want to effectively address the violence in schools. And two, we want to also effectively be able to address the repeated incidents of behavior and disruption that are occurring in schools. So we're very excited about the revisions that we've made over the course of this past year, and we're looking forward to implementing that this, this school year. Also added five additional campus patrol positions to our school system. Campus patrol are instructional assistants that work hand in hand with our school resource officers and also our school administrators. They are able to patrol the campuses as well as the hallways, making sure that students are where they need to be, and they've proven to be very effective. So we're excited to be able to add additional, five additional campus patrol to the already 10 that we currently have. Mrs. Miles is going to also talk about school resource officers, our request for five additional SROs later on in the agenda. We've also added an electronic hall pass or E-hall pass. This is, if you remember when you were in school, you got the little note and you carried it with you wherever you needed to go, whether it was the restroom or the office, whatever it may be. Now we also have an electronic hall pass that we're going to be rolling out into our secondary schools, and that'll enable the campus patrol, school resource officers, school administrators to know who's out in the hallways, when they're out, where they are, where they're going, and it'll be a good tracking tool for us also to be able to pull data from so that we can see if there are students that are out in the hallways too frequently, that we can address that in an effective way. Also looking at adding layered programming in our schools through virtual learning programs, a long-term behavior intervention program in each of our secondary schools, where students will be assigned kind of as an intermediary between regular classroom experience as well as our alternative school at Choices. So that'll be an intermediary step that'll be in each of our secondary schools coming up this year. And now that we've finished the renovations to East Salisbury School, that has opened up a space which used to be the Wycomico Early Learning Center, WELC. It used to be Tiny Tot before that, if you remember where that is. That'll be our Early Learning Transition Center, where we'll be able to work with students that are coming to us in pre-K and kindergarten that are struggling in larger classroom settings and a larger school setting. We'll be able to work with them in a much smaller setting first to be able to get adjusted to the classroom setting and kind of learn how to do school, so to speak, before they transition back into their regular classroom setting. So that'll be a help especially to our early learning programs that we've seen some of the struggles that they had last year, so that's in response to that. Another exciting thing that we're adding this year as an initiative is called Twilight CTE. So we are looking at expanding the CTE program. If you remember, a number of you went to the ribbon cutting at the Warwick Technical Center. Prior to that, Warwick always used our, our Parkside CTE Center as their base of instruction in the evenings. Now that they have a new center at Warwick, it'll free up some of the classroom space, so we're excited to be able to offer some of our CTE programs in the evenings in a Twilight program that we can offer to our evening high school students as well as other interested high school students. So that'll be starting this school year as well. Also, we've always had a early child program at CTE. As a part of our pre-K expansion program, we're now going to be having pre-K students. That'll become our newest pre-K classroom. That'll actually be housed in that program within CTE each and every day as we're looking to add more pre-K students into our school system. Another exciting initiative that we're working on, and that'll be introduced as school opens this school year, is middle school sports. We see that students that are connected to school obviously are much more higher achieving students when they're connected to a sport or a program or a club or an activity. So we are expanding some of those programs that we see working at the high school into the middle school. So we'll be introducing six sports in each of our middle schools this coming fall. So that's an exciting program that we're excited about and something that we think's going to really make a difference.
What sports are you integrating?
Looking at Dr. Briggs.
Soccer, cross-country, volleyball, basketball.
Black football.
Black football, and I believe track.
Good. Very good.
So we saw that when we looked at data and did a lot of the, the deep dive into data last school year about our results, we saw the middle school was an area where we were seeing high discipline numbers and also lower student achievement overall. So that was something that we really wanted to look at and how we could connect more middle school students to their overall programs and instruction in classrooms during the day by adding more programs after school that they could get involved with and then be able to utilize that to connect more with the school and have a reason to be able to come to school and do well in their classrooms.
Because that is where you want to readjust.
That's right.
Yeah, but by the time you're at senior, it's already a foregone conclusion. That's, that's good.
I think that's going to be a big addition.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a cost for them to be in these programs? I know that no cost. Hallelujah.
So what we've also done, and you kind of stole my thunder a little bit, but we have gone, gone and done away with all fees. We've waived all fees for all programs in all of our schools across the board, whether it be for band, chorus, sports, clubs, whatever it may be that they want to get involved with. We didn't want any barriers to be able to do that.
When I was going to school, we didn't have to pay for anything. All we had to do was dry clean the choir robes or the band robes. That was an expense parents had.
Were even going to take care of that.
And I think that also when they play sports, we don't want to forget their academics. Because I'm finding out from people I talk to, the kids from Choices is being pulled to play basketball. After the basketball, football season's over, they're sent back to Choice, but they're academics. And I, I'm trying, and the reason why I'm saying this is because if they don't go in school, they don't get a high school to recommend certificate of attendance. And I said, if we can eliminate as much as we can for not giving children certificate of attendance, that would be an achievement.
Absolutely. And what we're trying to do as we implement these programs is ensure that each program is connected back to that classroom teacher and that those advisors and those coaches are in communication with the classroom teacher. And also, these are programs that students are going to have to work hard to be able to be involved with, so they have to have a certain GPA, attendance, behavior in order to be able to be involved with those programs even at the middle school level. Great question. And then the last thing I also want to mention, the Wycomico County Education Foundation, because they are sponsoring two of our initiatives. One is the middle school sports. They provided us with some funding to be able to get that off the ground and the equipment that we need to be able to do that this school year. And the second is a rebranding initiative. So we're going to be coming out as we look at changing our school system and the face of our school system as we look at our community and what they see in us. We want them to see all of the great things that we're doing in our school system each and every day. So the Education Foundation is also sponsoring a rebranding initiative where from that, we've gotten a stakeholder feedback from our students and our parents and our, our teachers to be able to create a new logo, some new taglines for our school system, and we'll be able to use that as we move forward this school year with these new initiatives to market our school system and the great things that we're doing from that. So you'll see that very soon. We'll be unveiling that in the next few weeks as a school starts.
So will that be sort of like a, from a broad perspective, or will it also be implemented per school, for individual schools, for type, you know, kind of like, you know, for, like, for Bennett, Parkside, or for Wycomico?
It's going to be more of a broad initiative as a school system-wide, a new logo and a new marketing campaign for that. But also, schools will be able to tag onto that as we push these new logos and, and new marketing out into our community. They'll be able to do that same thing with social media and kind of use that to spring into some information with, from our own schools individually as well.
Does school spirit come into play a lot with, you know, how a child interprets what their experience is?
I, I feel like absolutely. You know, if you can, it's just like any other team. You know, if you can create a team within that school where they're all working toward the same goals, looking at the, the same, the same initiatives as a school system, then I think that they're going to work together and they're going to perform better ultimately. So those are just some of the things that we're sparking off this school year to get our community excited, to get our schools excited, and get students excited to be a part of a new school year. So look for many of those things as we start our new school year, and we certainly appreciate your support as we do that.
Dr. Stoffler, the five campus patrol that are in addition to the 10 that we already have, is that, how are they distributed? Is it one per school or certain schools get two or?
That's correct. So we distribute them based on need. We look at our discipline numbers. We look at the, the climate, the needs of the, of each individual school, size of the school, the things that are going on and what the administrators need within that school. So some schools, like our largest schools, will have at least two of them, and some schools will be getting, you know, a new one or their first one for the first time as we expand this. We see it really working within our school system, the help with the climate of the schools and to, to get students out of the hallways, to get them into the classroom, and also to kind of support what the administrators are working towards.
Thank you.
Got a question. Go on to agenda item number two. Turn it over to Dr. Rigger.
Good afternoon. I'm going to share with you some updates from our very busy summer in the fields of facilities and planning and construction. First and foremost, if you've been by Mardella, you've seen there's an awful lot of work going on there. As work continues, some of the work actually is wrapping up. So Phase One is on track for completion and occupancy for teachers returning next Wednesday. They're working hard. That includes new high school classrooms in science, brand-new laboratory facilities as well as some general classrooms, new kitchen, new cafeteria, stage, classrooms for performing arts, band, orchestra, chorus, visual arts, family consumer science, and really excited about some new space for PE and athletics with an auxiliary gym. No more practicing wrestling on, on the cafeteria floor, so we have a much better space there.
For the stage.
For the stage, yeah. It's, it's awesome. A couple of us had a chance to get out there and tour the newer areas. It's exciting. Phase Two began while Phase One was wrapping up, and it's conversion of the old cafeteria and some of the southwest area of the building into new classroom spaces. So that work will continue, looking at another year and a half, two years for that project to be completed. But we're continuing, continuing to roll into new spaces as, as those phases are completed. Other projects going on, Pinehurst, if you've driven by there, obviously a lot of work going on. That's continuation of our ESAR-funded HVAC and window and door project. Also, that, we have ESAR-funded window and door project, final phase being completed at Glen Avenue Elementary. I visited that school on Friday. It looked like a lot of work going on, and they assured me it's going to be ready for next week as well. It's really some nice upgrades to that school. East Salisbury, final phase of their ESAR-funded windows and doors as well. Coming along great. You heard Dr. Stoffler allude to that with the, the new space for our transition program. At Wycomico High School, two large projects going on there, both very visible from the outside. We're in Phase Two of the ESAR-funded HVAC project, and Phase One began this summer, the roof replacement. So these are phased projects occurring over a number of summers so we can continue to occupy the entire building during the school year. Fruitland Primary, excited to begin work there. We've had meetings, several meetings with stakeholder groups this summer to confirm the ed specs for the replacement school project, moving forward with that. At Parkside, we are in the process now of selecting a construction manager for the roof replacement. That too will be a multi-phase, several summer project to replace the roof at Parkside, and also added a dining canopy on the backside of the building, gives students some more space and fresh air during, during lunchtime. As you're aware, we have a number of modular classrooms around the county, and we've replaced the barge units, which are the individual HVAC units on many of those this summer, I think about 80. Wy Middle, if you've been by there, you've seen the beautiful new bus canopy out front to really help students getting off the bus and into the building, especially in inclement weather. Delmar and Pittsville both have roof restoration replacement projects that are finishing up. And that, yeah, that pretty much wraps up our major projects this summer.
Timing on Pinehurst?
I believe, I don't have that in front of me, I believe it's going to be wrapped up this year, but I can, I'll verify that. Thank you.
Mardella, so I've had questions about the traffic on Delmar Road with the kids getting picked up. When all this is done, do I understand that the traffic route's going to change and that traffic's going to be in the parking lot now or?
We're going to separate buses from cars when the whole project is done. So we purchased that property on the corner of Delmar and Sharp Town Roads. It's now like parking spaces, but that's going to be reconfigured as the project is completed. So buses will come in off Sharp Town Road, cars, parents dropping off students, teachers will come in off of Delmar Road into the park, a new parking lot that's, some of it's existing now kind of temporarily, but where the, all those portables are where the original parking lot was.
Thank you.
You have a similar type of problem at Wy, at Wy Middle too, where the parents just line up right out in the street for quite a while.
Yeah, and we, we don't have the benefit of space there like we have at Mardella, unfortunately. So that's a challenge to a number of schools. We saw a number of car riders really increase post-COVID, and it's starting to tick down a bit, but that creates some issues at schools because there's, parking lots weren't designed for that number of car riders.
If you wonder about how large some of these capital projects are, just the, I just witnessed personally, the, the materials for Wy, for Wy Senior High, it took like two days just to deliver all the materials and get it where it needed to be, and we're talking 30 or 40 people in multiple trucks going in and out.
Yeah, and there were over 30 tractor trailers worth bringing in materials.
And that's just one phase.
Yeah.
Really? Okay. Wow. It was a lot of stuff. And I also want to mention that I appreciated that I was given an opportunity to do a tour of, of Mardella, but the day of, I had an issue that came up rather quickly.
School building commission, yeah.
Yeah, but so I certainly would, certainly would like to do it at some other point in time without being.
We're actually prepared to invite all of the council members for those that would like to attend, and we've extended an invitation, we'll be extending to our own board members as well, for those that weren't, didn't see it so far on the school building commission. So look for an invitation in the next few weeks. We'll put something together where we can take maybe smaller groups through and see the new areas.
Very busy.
One-time funding progress.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. With great appreciation to you, we are in the midst of and in some stages completion of four major projects that were funded through the one-time funding, so I'll give you an update on each of those. The first is the migration of analog to IP-based video management. Don't know exactly what all those words mean, but I know that we're upgrading all of the camera systems. That's in standard English for me, and that is in process. That is very detail-focused, and we have a great team working on it. So we look for completion a little bit later into the year.
Except for storage as well?
That's part of it, part of the, the transition to cloud, but mostly it's the mechanical transition of the cameras that had been in place into the more technologically appropriate cameras that have longer lifespan, clearer video, greater capacity for the information that's needed.
Resolution with the new camera systems much higher.
Much higher.
For, for school administrators, campus patrol, SROs to be able to zoom in and pan and do those kinds of things.
Second project was additional security fencing. We had identified five schools specific to this funding. Three of those, Willard's, Westside Primary, and Westside Intermediate, the fencing is completed. A fourth, Northwestern, I've been assured we're about 90% complete. I think part of that might be in conjunction with the Mardella construction and making sure all the layers fit together. And the fifth identified school was Prince Street, and that is in process. And so hopefully we'll have that completed in the not-too-distant future. Keeping in mind that these were the fencing projects specific to this funding as we continue to look at other fencing projects moving forward. So our third area, the backup cameras and two additional internal cameras for all buses. This is for, as I mentioned, all buses, Wycomico County Public School-owned buses and contractor buses. We have approximately 60 of the buses that had the installations completed. The vendor who is installing is apparently very popular and is working the entire East Coast, not only on installation specific to buses and that type of transportation, but also with law enforcement vehicles. So he is scheduling us in as availability. So we're just under, just under halfway through. When the backup camera is installed, the additional two cameras internally on the bus are installed at the same time. Out of those 60 that are completed, all but four of the county buses are complete, and those four were not available either due to repair or something of that nature. And at this point in time, we're continuing to move forward. The vendor slash installer is working our installation schedule in as closely and as tightly as possible, with full respect to all that is in process for him at the moment. And our fourth area, security film for the front entrance doors. This is the film that, as a reminder, will, think of your windshield. If something comes at your windshield, I hope you're not in the car if that happens, but the windshield will shatter but won't compress. It just disperses the energy of, of what's happening at the glass. Very similar effect with this security film. And at this point in time, we are anticipating that the materials will be available mid-September, and installation will begin at the time that materials are received. This will be happening again on the entrance doors of all of our schools. So again, great appreciation to your approval of the one-time funding, and there's our update for those four major projects.
Entrance doors just in the front or all entrance doors?
At this point, it is the front. We're looking at the capacity for other entrance points as well.
All right. Turn it over to Dr. Briggs for our blueprint update.
Thank you, sir. Last time we were together, I shared that we had submitted our blueprint implementation to plan to both MSD and the AIB by the March 15 deadline. Since that time, we did receive feedback from both organizations. Now, they, they were supposed to work collaboratively to provide feedback to local school districts. They did not work collaboratively, so we received two different sets of feedback, one from MSD, which we were responsive to, and then a different set of feedback from the AIB, which again, we were also responsive to, just making some minor tweaks to our plan. And the AIB at their July 27 board meeting unanimously approved our 2023 blueprint implementation plan. Ourselves and I think 19 other school districts got full approval. There was three LEAs that did have some conditional approval and another one that had some financial issues, but we were fortunately on the good side of that. I do want to highlight that we were commended for quite a few areas, but I want to highlight just a few of those for the council and the community. Specifically, we were commended for our work with private providers to help serve our most vulnerable students in pre-K, our understanding of the teacher shortage and challenges to expanding our teacher workforce, and I know Dr. Pavick's going to speak to that in just a second, our commitment to diversifying our team responsible for recruiting and selecting our new teachers, our comprehensive approach to tier two and three interventions in identified areas for growth early in a child's academic experience, our approach in providing job-embedded professional development in both reading and math, and then our strong relationship with higher education institutions and employers to support the implementation of post-CCR, college and career readiness pathways. So we will continue to keep the council and the community updated on the important work going into our next required submission, which will be next March. So it'll be an updated plan that we'll have to submit to again, both the MSD and AIB.
Questions? Is the interaction and response time productive?
We, I believe the AIB has been very supportive of us. They jump on our monthly calls with myself and the other blueprint coordinators from across the state. So yeah, I believe the AIB has been very, very beneficial with their feedback and the correspondence. MSD is getting there. They've went through some staffing changes, and I'm hopeful that the collaboration between MSD and AIB is improving. There might be a little bit of rose-colored glasses there. I do think there's a little bit of power dynamic, right? Because MSD used to kind of run things as far as education goes across the state. Now the ultimate funding authority falls on the AIB. So they, they have the power now.
Do you see whether there's any pressures whereas maybe an area that's in a rural district such as Wycomico County differs with what the goals might be of those people who are only familiar with maybe more, more populated areas?
It's definitely different. You know, for, just one example would be like the apprenticeships. We are specifically trying to grow the apprenticeship opportunities for our high school students. Well, if there's lack of businesses and opportunities for those students in a more rural area, that definitely impacts us. Where the more urban cities, those students can, you know, get on the bus and get to a, a job where there's greater opportunity. So apprenticeship opportunities is one. Pay is another. Again, Dr. Pavick and his team through negotiations and through the support of the council, which we appreciate as far as funding goes, but we have to get to that $60,000 baseline by 2025. And so other districts across the state, some of them are already there, but, but we're, we're not there yet, and we're, are working hard to get there.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
I also want to just highlight, Dr. Pavick is not new to coming to the council, but typically does not, but I, I think it's important for the council and the community to hear all of the work. Sometimes we do get questions, well, what do you guys do over the summer? So we turn to this, this gentleman here and his outstanding team in human resources and the things that they do over the summer for, for hiring new employees, new teachers and others. So we thought it'd be great to highlight some of that for you today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. Yeah, I wanted to highlight, I thank, thank Dr. Stoffler for understanding that what most people don't is that whenever I see people out in the community, they say, hey, how's your summer going? And I always answer, what summer? You know, we don't stop. It is really a busy time. I would like to recognize Dr. Briggs and his team and the administrative teams that really worked really hard getting us up to almost full staffing before we get into the start of the school year. I pulled some data. This is hot off the presses. This is as of this morning, and then I got a call where we may lose another teacher. So it, it is always in a state of flux. But to Dr. Stoffler's point, our HR team, I have to give them tons of credit. They work diligently through the summer. On every Wednesday, we have generally large groups of teachers and support staff that come in for orientations, and we start that. that come in for orientations, and we start that the first Wednesday after the Fourth of July, and it continues. We have another one tomorrow. I didn't get the final numbers, but we'll likely have another 25, 30 people in tomorrow. We'll be running them through orientation. And what a lot of people don't see is all the legwork that goes on behind the scenes. So I do want to publicly give my staff a lot of credit. I'm just a figurehead that stands there and barks out the orders. They're the ones that are, you know, doing the hard work of, you know, getting fingerprints done and background checks and making sure everybody's paperwork is in order. So to that effect, we have seen, we expected to be about 150 new teachers this year, which was a little elevated. Coming out of COVID, for instance, we had hit a new teacher number of 163. That was in 2022. But very fortunately, I think for us, we are going to end up around 132, 133. As of the board meeting, I had a report of 125. That has now changed. We've added a couple more. And currently, as of today, this morning, we are four staff from being completely, fully staffed across the system in terms of classroom positions. Now, there are some side positions, you know, some social workers and things of that. I did not include in these numbers. We're really focused on making sure classrooms are covered. And those four positions, actually, one may be filled by the end of September. That is a Spanish position that we have really struggled to find a position to, an individual fill that job. And as of this morning, I understand we may be getting somebody from Spain that is originally from the US but has been living in Spain that is coming back to the area. And so we're going to give her all due time to get back here, and likely by the end of September, that will be filled. The other three positions are middle school health teacher, which Mr. Thompson, he's going to do some creative things until he can fill that position, you know, combining some classes, using PhysEd in a creative way, and two social studies teachers, one at JMB and one at Salisbury Metal. And I know they were in the process of interviewing or setting up interviews, and that's really, that's how quickly things happen in our world, you know, day-to-day. There could be interviews set up, and we'll get a job. I might go back and find a job offer sitting on my desk when I get back. So that's the overall staffing report. I did want to highlight very quickly for you that one of the initiatives through the blueprint and something that we have been focused on largely since I got here, I've been here since 2011 or 2012, we've always tried to do what the blueprint has asked us to do, which is to make sure that we are increasing our diversity. We want to get our teaching staff and our school-based staff to look like the kids that are in the school. That's the goal. And right now, we have, I think, a pretty high number for where we normally are. We're usually around 13% minority hires. As of this morning, we're at 15.3% of our new teaching staff are of minority classifications. And I always focus on this number two, how much experience are we bringing in to the county? And amongst our current 130-ish teachers, we're, 22% of those new hires have at least 10 years of experience. So we're bringing a lot of experience into the county, and again, it's a credit to our hiring teams. We don't really do anything in HR as far as hiring. We bring them in and get them processed. So that's my report, and I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Questions?
I think I would add, talking to my counterparts across the state, we are very fortunate to be in the situation we're in right now as far as staffing goes. Many districts, you know, some of the larger districts are 100 teachers in the whole, 200 teachers in the whole. Some of our neighboring counties are, you know, which are much smaller than us are, you know, 20-plus teachers that they do not have to start the school year. So again, thank you to the council, the county funding sources, our Board of Ed for providing the budget that we do have, so.
I would, I'm sorry, I would echo that, and I apologize I didn't note it, but I did want to thank the council for that. It has made it easier at the bargaining table. I always thank our board, but I don't get the opportunity to say thank you to you guys because we really have seen a difference. When I got here, we were always looking at our neighbors and looking at losing or gaining. And we've actually, as far as our salaries go, are very competitive and in some cases ahead of some of those traditional counties that have been ahead of us for a long time. So thank you.
I'll just say, I was driving back on Sunday from Northeast and came through New Jersey, and they had a big billboard about, maybe it was 15 minutes outside New York City. And it said, you know, hiring base salary 61,000. I'm like, what? We're really competitive in a way that, you know, you think New York, you're getting salaries much bigger, and I'm starting to really finally, and I'm seeing, of course, more New Jersey plates around here. So that really makes me feel like we're doing, we're given a good salary here, we're given a better quality of life, and that's a great way to host new educators in the county, so.
I have a quick question. You increased, which I'm happy, the minority class. Where are they concentrated at? Are they in the middle schools, high schools?
That's, the assignment is pretty much all through the system. It's based on the needs and where those vacancies exist, and I know that there's a lot of internal movement. We try to shuffle, you know, folks around where they're going to make the greatest impact. So I don't have a specific answer for you. Maybe Dr. Briggs can.
Mine would be anecdotal as well. I actually had the opportunity to speak to all of our new teachers this morning, and I'm picturing the room, the Bennett Cafeteria where they were seated by school. And so it appears that it was pretty spread out as far as the diversity goes from.
Men, men teachers?
We're always trying to get more, but I know for a fact, and again, I think I spoke to three of them, but I think we had seven African-American males in the new teacher meeting this morning. So we haven't always had that. So are we where we want to be? No. But are we making progress? I believe we are, yes.
I'm Babe Wilson. At my physical therapy. I had never met Babe. He knew me through his aunt, but I never met him, and he said he'll be working.
He was saying, why middle school?
Uh-huh, that's what he said, yeah, yeah.
Dr. Pavick, I guess, you know, everybody's, I think, no matter who you are, you recognize that there's big issues as far as the country as a whole with immigration, and it is out of control. I really think anybody, anybody would tell you they felt the same way. Have we seen any of that reflected in Wycomico County, whereas we're seeing staffing challenges based on that with maybe a more than traditional influx of migrants to the Eastern Shore area?
I would say probably not to the degree that, you know, you would think, but I have noticed that we have a lot of foreign, you know, folks coming through as substitutes more than anywhere else, not so much in the full-time staffing. And but we've not, we've not run into any problems where a person doesn't have, you know, legitimate residency.
I'm just wondering whether or not we're finding out that we're going to need more staff, we're going to need more interpreters. And I'm not talking about the teachers, I'm talking about.
Student body.
I'm talking about the student, yeah, whether, how the student population is changing, whereas we have to adjust with staff.
Yeah, I think Ms. Miles will be able to speak to that. I know we have up to 41 different language-speaking students now, which is incredible.
At least, yes. I would say definitely our numbers of English learner students are, the numbers are increasing, and we have our newcomer center, we have added staff there. We continue to work with language lines so that we're able to regularly and effectively communicate with families. It's better if you have person-to-person, but we don't have persons who speak all of the languages that are represented in our county. So having the translator, it's a live translator on the phone with you going back and forth is definitely a high level of benefit, more than not having someone to do that. And we continue to look at those numbers. Services to EOL students are also part of pillar four in the blueprint, so it is an area of focus and emphasis to ensure that we have the supports and all of the resources that are needed to meet the needs.
We have a growing Haitian community.
Yes, we do.
And I know, I don't know if, you're probably familiar with it, the Haitian Community Center.
Yes.
Because that would be a good asset.
We partner with them quite regularly, I guess.
When you look at the subgroup of students, as those that are enrolling to us for the first time and look at them just as a subgroup, as new enrollees, we definitely see out of all of our new students that the numbers that are English language learners, that maybe are coming to us of poverty, those percentages of that subgroup are higher than our overall percentages, which means that all of our students that are new to us and enrolling to us are just increasing the numbers that we are seeing as it relates to English language learners and students of poverty. And I'd also like to just highlight again, Dr. Pavick, for, we have about, just to give you an idea, about 1,400 classroom teachers. So for us to be sitting in a position where we're looking for four vacancies at this point in time, I think that speaks to the job that HR, it's a small department, only about a dozen people are doing. And then also, all of the school administrators and those that are hiring those individuals, they're doing a great job in a short period of time over the course of a summer.
All right. Ms. Miles?
Hello again. An update on our request for additional SROs. As you know, and you've heard multiple times, we have added five SROs to our budget process support, as well as to our cadre of 10 current SROs. Just as a reminder, all of our secondary schools have a full-time SRO, as well as the SRO sergeant. The five additional SROs, I would like to tell you are onboard, but still working with the sheriff's office to get them hired. I'm sure you're very much aware from Sheriff Lewis of all the work that's going on there. We also have a link to that application process on our own website for anyone who would see it and be interested as well. But we're not stopping. We're not standing in place just waiting for those positions to be filled, though I am hearing that at least a few of them, them being the positions, are in process at this point in time. Remember, there's a very specific training for SROs above and beyond the standard law enforcement training that's required in those positions. As we await the filling of those positions and the addition of those SROs into our school buildings, the funding that is dedicated to that area of safety will remain dedicated to the area of safety. We will continue to look at the prioritized safety listings to see what can, through the verification process and the allowances within the accounts, be dedicated to meeting those safety needs in the interim, not staffing-wise, but I'll give an example, not certain if this is one that would be eligible, but perhaps there is another fencing safety concern, and we have available funding that is not yet being put in that salary of FTE area because the position isn't filled. The money's not going to be used for anything other than a safety-focused situation. Remember, all of our elementary schools are covered, that's not the best term, but only because the term should be stronger that I'm using, and it's just escaping me at the moment, but every one of our SROs is directly assigned to one or more elementary schools that they are on campus for on a regular basis. They have activities at those schools. They are there, if it's not daily, on and every other day or every few days, they're in those buildings so that they are still a part of those school communities as well. We also have funding that is available to provide SRO involvement in our after-school and extracurricular activities. So maintaining, maintaining the emphasis and focus on safety, but also further enhancing that engagement of the SROs as part of that school community that is so important. You have, many of you have commented on that in the past and have acknowledged the importance of the SRO being a part of the school community, and we're finding more and more ways to further expand that opportunity.
I think it's important for the council, just, I think, one of the stipulations from the council was that the funding that we received from the county above maintenance of effort be used towards the salaries of additional school resource officers or until such time they were found towards school safety initiatives. So we are planning to certainly do that until those positions are filled, whether it be, you know, November or December, from what we're being told, hopefully, the salaries that we have not expended in September and October or November, whatever it may be, as we continue, will be used towards school safety items such as security film, security fencing, and other things. So it may require actually council approval for us to be able to, you know, take that funding from one category to another. So it's important that we wanted to update all of you on that.
Ms. Miles, I was wondering, do you have to be a sheriff to be a student resource officer, or could you be like a, like a city police officer or, or some other law enforcement background to be able to take the, get the necessary training and to apply to be an SRO? Like, you know, I was just wondering.
Our partnership is with the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, so all of our, excuse me, all of our SROs are deputies through that department. But we would welcome others from, I'm not trying to steal from other departments, but should someone move into the area and have that background and choose to seek employment with Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, then they could look at an interest area of an SRO.
I was just thinking, because, you know, because a lot of those guys are doing overtime, and they're doing that, I believe, and could there be a position where, like you said, somebody moves in and says, I just want to be an SRO, and this is what I want to do? Can we do it?
We'd send them straight to WCSO and partner them up very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
To help answer your question, all police officers in Maryland are covered under Maryland Police Training. That's where they get their certification, if you, if that's where you were going with that.
I was just wondering whether the school could hire them just independently?
Like outsource them, like, you know, private contract maybe with someone?
We have not chosen to go that direction. We are partnered with WCSO, and the training that I referenced is not, the SRO-specific training is not through WCSO, rather, it is through MCSS Maryland Center for School Safety. It is a state-mandated training.
Okay, thank you.
What have you found other school districts do as far as hiring SROs? Is that what most of them all do, go with the sheriff's office, or do they do other police forces or?
There are a variety of approaches across the state. Some systems may have a security cadre of non-police officers. I would say, my understanding is that the not, the majority work with a local law enforcement entity, but there are other options throughout the state. We find this to be the most supportive and most advantageous for the safety of the schools at this point in time.
Those that are of our size, school districts or smaller, typically will always contract with a local law enforcement agency, whether it be the state police, the city police, or town police in their area, or the sheriff's department in their area. Large school systems, you know, Montgomery County and others, do have their own contracted police departments. But I know that the sheriff's department here has put out advertisements just for school resource officers, so those that are coming from other law enforcement agencies or maybe they've retired recently could easily, you know, answer that ad and work with the sheriff's department, which is who we have our MOU with.
I'll take the next one. There was a question about media resources, and so for this, I just wanted to highlight the procedure that we have as a school district, is the selection and review of curriculum, instructional materials, and media material procedure kind of guides the process. And so specific to media materials, parents and guardians have, may contact the media specialist concerning any books they do not want checked out by their child. We're empowering our, our parents and guardians throughout the system. The media specialist can flag these on the child's Destiny account so that they do not check them out. If concerns are not resolved there, the parent or guardian may communicate their concerns in writing or email to the school principal. The school principal will then arrange a conference with the parent and guardian and the media specialist to reach a resolution. And if the concerns are not resolved at the first conference, the individual can register his or her specific concerns in writing to the chief academic officer. In that case, it would be me. And to date, I've had no concerns brought to my attention as chief academic officer. So we feel like the procedure's working. We're empowering our parents and guardians to be involved, communicate with their school, and communicate with their children. What I think is okay for my children to read might be different than what Ms. Miles does, but that's not her call to tell my child what they can and can't read or vice versa. So the procedure appears to be working.
Is that, is that a newsletter that can go out to, like, the parents so that they're aware of the process? Because, you know, we get parents that contact us and we're not part of the board, and I don't mind directing them. It's just, where's the direction? And is that something that you guys provide them ahead of time?
Yeah, we have. It's been similar conversations we've had with our Board of Ed, and we've shared that out, but we'll continue to make sure that we share that out with our entire school community. But again, and I'll just restate that, and we'll share it with you um, and we'll share it with you, um, as the council as well. But it's the selection and review of curriculum, instructional materials, and media materials procedure. So it would cover, um, curriculum in the, you know, the high school science class, to the, a media book, to a textbook, or an online resource. Um, the procedure's very, uh, very clear, and there's a, a process to play. But yes, we'll communicate it out.
Thank you.
I might have missed that. Did you say you'd never had anybody show concerns about what kind of books were in the?
Not that it's not been handled at the school level.
Okay.
People like to say stuff on social media and things, Mr. Holloway?
I don't do that.
I know you find that hard to believe, but, um...
Is that true? Do they?
But, uh, the process has not followed out where it's made it to my attention as chief academic officer.
We have had parents reach out to their school administrator, or just email the media specialist at their school and say, "Hey, you know, we'd rather our child not read this book or that book," whatever it may be. And it's a very simple process. So we know that that is out there because parents are, are doing that in some cases.
But when you get it, or some of your administrators get it, they don't send it to Dr. Briggs?
It's, in order for the book to be completely removed from the library in total, so that no one could check it out or ever look at it, uh, it would have to go through Dr. Briggs and at the central office level. There's not been any parents that have appealed that. Uh, we have had parents that have spoke, you know, that speak for their own individual children and saying, "Hey, we, you know, we don't want our child checking this out or checking that out." And that's handled at the school level where it's a very simple process because our, um, card catalog is electronic. So it's just something that's easily done.
Could you email me that process? Because there are people that do ask me that, and I just need to be able to... Here it is.
That's no problem.
I want to say this, um, as a parent, uh, five boys, well, we had six, my nephew. I don't care what you try to keep away from your children. They have friends that may be able to check that book out. And the friends are gonna share that book with them. So you may be able to tell, "Well, I don't want you to read that book." But the more you tell a child, "You can't read this book," they're gonna say, "Well, why can't I read this book?" And they're gonna go find that book from somebody, go online, go to bookstore and purchase it with their allowances, and read that book. So I'm thinking that what he was telling me, what he just said, that the parents are not really concerned about that. It's just a little 5% or 1% who wants to censor books. And I think that, um, you can't keep your children from things. This is the real world. You can't keep your child from the real world. They're gonna get information one way or the other. They're gonna get it. And I don't care what you do, they are gonna get that information because you done told them no. And as a child, they're gonna go and, cause I was a child once, believe it or not, and more my parents told me no. I said, "Why are they telling me no? I want to find out why." So I'm just saying, the parents that's listening, don't be, think you're naive by telling your child no, because they're gonna go seek it out anyway from their peers.
I think sometimes, uh, you know, from our perspective here and, and listening to constituents, I think what we're really looking for, and I guess, I would assume you were looking at the same thing, is some type of assurances that, that we could state unequivocally that there is not access to reading materials, and to say it just nicely, that reading materials that would make every one of us in this room feel very uncomfortable if we were to have to read those materials out loud. And I'm just curious as to whether or not we know that that is a situation, and if that is a situation, you know, what, if, if there's a justification for that.
Probably won't answer the question the way you want me to. But I will say that we have a procedure in place for both the purchasing of the materials and the review of any, um, challenges that may be brought up. And that procedure and that process keeps all of us out of trouble. It shouldn't be what John Cannon thinks is appropriate, or what Rick Briggs thinks is appropriate. Uh, we have to set that aside. Um, and we follow the process and the procedure that's in place, and we empower the parents and guardians.
Well, you know, we try to create assurances to the public, and I would never really want, in this, in this environment here, you, you've seen the news across everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, 100%.
And, and the one that really stood out to me one time was when one of the parents got up in front of a board, a school board meeting, and actually was beginning to read from a page of a book that had been, that had been taken out of the school. And it was actually so embarrassing for everybody to have to be exposed to it, that, you know, he was asked to sit down, "Cause you can't read that in public. You can't do that." And it sort of showed, you know, it kind of displayed the irony of the fact that it was a book that this individual had gotten through the school system, and yet you couldn't even read it publicly. I wouldn't want that to happen in Wycomico County where, where we were, uh, you know, either the board, or whether the council were exposed to that.
I agree with that.
And there's a lot of different layers to that. I mean, there are some book challenges that I read in, in the news that, you know, these are books that have been in libraries, county libraries, school libraries for decades and decades. And, and then there are others that, you know, we work with our media specialists to ensure that they're bringing in age-appropriate books, um, to our media centers. And, and if it's an instructional material, that goes through a very diligent review process that also has, has approval from our own Board of Education. If it's something that's gonna be in the classroom, uh, and be either required as a, as a novel, or, or something that the students have to read, or that the teacher's gonna teach from.
Mm-hmm. And I get that too. I, I was under the impression probably most of it's recreational reading. Or at least that would be where you could be subject to that type of exposure.
James?
I was gonna suggest, we, we have like committees all over for this county, just to, for volunteers, just for people to put their input in for things that we do in the county. I just wonder if there's a, maybe a committee that you have for books reading, uh, book reading committee, that where you have parents that volunteer, or, or grandparents that volunteer to read books, and, and just give you their opinions on it, whether it's appropriate or not. So I, I didn't know if that was a, a thing, if you actually had a committee like that.
Not right now, but taking under advisement.
We, we do have a committee that's convened with Dr. Briggs and a number of, um, you know, different stakeholders within the school system. If there's an appeal for a book to be completely removed from the, a school library, uh, he is in charge of putting a, a committee together to review that and review the books that may be coming to us for appeal.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm glad we're talking about books. I love the fact that children are reading, right? You know what I mean?
That's right.
So, um, I hope that we all channel the energy that we have about media resources and encourage our students, as we're beginning to start the school year, to read.
Right.
To read. And yes, we want it to be appropriate, but put down the phones.
Right.
Close the laptop or iPad and read a book. Um, and so I'll...
That's right.
Not to move it on, but I think that's a good point that I need to make.
Jeff, did you have a comment?
Um, so it sounds like we got a pretty good method in place.
Process.
If at some point it becomes where it doesn't work, you'd probably adjust it accordingly. And to piggyback on Councilman Wynn's, um, can you send that to Laura?
She can just...
And then she can get it out to us, cause, cause we all get asked these questions. And all we want to do is put out factual information, again. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You have cannabis next?
We do. That's our last agenda item. So, uh, we're looking, we're really looking to the council. We have a number of questions that we could ask, but we can certainly speak to it from our, our point of view.
We'll get back to you with that.
So I, I start by saying that I am not the expert on legalization of cannabis and the effect on schools. I do, however, have a very strong opinion and a strong focus on safety, as do we all. So let's keep in mind, uh, Federal Drug-Free Workplace Act takes precedent. And that emphasizes, sorry, I have to look down, make sure I get this right. It's classified as a Schedule I Controlled Substance under federal law. Under federal law, its use remains illegal, applies directly to the use or the influence of cannabis in schools, even if such use is permitted by law. Now, keep in mind, state law did not say that cannabis was permitted in schools. It has other tangents and ages and things like that. But keep, this is the mo, the point of focus for us. All employees, contractors, volunteers, and visitors are required to comply with this law, that's the Federal Drug-Free Workplace Act, and may not distribute, possess, use, or be under the influence of cannabis while in schools or during work hours, including but not limited to, and it goes on to speak of transporting students, attending school-sponsored events. That means if you are associated with a school, whether you are a parent or community person visiting, if you are a student or a staff, no one can be under the influence of cannabis, nor can anyone have it on their possession, nor can they sell or distribute. That's the most simplistic of terms. But then it turns into the discussion point of where would, in relation to the physicality of a school, where would cannabis be permissible? Well, there are drug-free, drug-free school zones. That's 1,000 feet of every school. So there's a starting point. And then I think we need to have other legal counsel involved in that, um, in terms of what is permitted, personally. And I will not say I'm speaking on behalf of our board, but I hope they would agree, as far away from a school as you could allow it to be distributed legally is what would make us happiest. Um, our job is to keep it out of schools, and to keep those under the influence of it out of schools.
Tough.
That's, that's our focus.
To the distribution point on Mount Herman Road, is that within 1,000 foot of your school, of Y High?
I would assume not. I would assume they would not have been given approval. I apologize. I...
Wait a minute, we're dealing...
Don't, Mr. Holloway, know that.
They got approval through state law to open. You're talking federal law, right? When you mentioned 1,000 foot, is that federal law?
Drug-free school zone is a Maryland...
That's a Maryland law?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's not a federal law?
My understanding is it's Maryland law. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would look to Mr. Baker for some help on that.
Now, what, what designates a school? The front door, the back door, or the property line?
It's a central point of the school campus itself, is what has been described to me.
A central point.
By our Safe Schools Coordinator, by the entrance.
So you draw a circle and you...
It's a circumference point, yes.
Point in the middle.
Yes. That, that's how, as it has been described to me by our Safe Schools Coordinator.
So I would say that it's with, it's out of the 1,000-foot range, knowing just...
That's my understanding.
Driving by there and, and seeing it, so.
So it's 1,000 feet from the center?
Approximately the center. I don't want to be misrepresented on that, but it's not 1,000 feet from the end of the campus perimeter.
Okay.
It's not 1,000 feet out from that.
The reason why I bring that up is cause, uh, you know, if you break the tape measure out, you might have 1,000 feet to the front door from the center, you know, in some of these areas in the schools. I mean, I've been into most of these schools, you know, it's, they're big. So in the center out, you could have 1,000 feet, and so that's a drug zone right outside the front door. So I just wonder where it really is.
It's something that, just as recently as yesterday, or, no, I'm sorry, Friday, I was in communication with our Safe Schools Coordinator, seeking clarification on that. I understand what you're saying. If you look at the midpoint of, um, James M. Bennett High School, and you go out 1,000 feet, it might be at College Avenue. That's not what I'm trying to represent. But again, I'm not the, I, I need to get more information to give you further clarification on that.
Thank you.
And that's something that the Maryland State Board of Education, I'm assuming, is trying to work on with, uh, with the state of Maryland as a whole. Cause this is all in flux as well, right? It's not really something where Wycomico is gonna come up with a whole different description. I mean, this is something I'm, I'm assuming that the state's gonna have to decide on.
I thought, I thought we could add two.
No, wait, no, the only thing we can, you know, we cannot, what it was, we cannot subtract the distance Wycomico County. The only thing we can do is we can't increase the distance of a, of a dispensary from the school. We're not allowed to say, "No, it's not 1,000, it has to be 3,000." We can't do that. We can only go from 1,000 to 500. So it's, I thought it's kind of ironic that the only thing that we're, we're empowered to do is to get closer...
Please don't do that.
Please don't do that.
So I'm just hoping that the, the state association recognizes the, the inconsistencies, like such as James suggested, 1,000 feet may not be enough. But that isn't gonna be your role, I think, right? Your role is just simply interpret what the state's gonna hand down to you?
Right. We've not received any direction from MSD regarding, uh, any new laws in cannabis in Maryland. Obviously, we're focused on everything from the edge of our campus within, uh, regarding, uh, the safe, safe schools, uh, space within that. But I would encourage the council to get as much clarification on whatever regulations that you can put in place to ensure that our, our, um, safe school zones are in play within Wycomico County, and that they remain that way.
Can we share with them what, I mean, could you send them the, the PowerPoint that...
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, we can send you that, that our attorneys put together for us. It's, it's an easy read.
We've been having work sessions with Andrew Illuminati about all this.
Mm-hmm.
Have we had two?
Two. Yeah.
Yeah. I know a couple, couples are trying to get it. We're gonna go to the Maryland City District County's Conference this week to try to learn more and figure out what we can do.
It's gonna be a lively discussion.
Quite certain.
Well, obviously, there's, you know, I, just like, I don't think, um, you know, many of the kids who may, uh, you know, I remember in high school, I remember seeing, I mean, classmates having bottles of, uh, that they didn't go to the, to the liquor store to purchase, but they had them with them. Uh, same kind of situation. Uh, you know, we, I don't, you know, it's not the kids that are gonna be going to the dispensary. Most likely, there's a security protocol there. But certainly, you know, they can, uh, from what we heard there, you know, they can grow plants at home, uh, than average individual can now, where they, you know, the parents could be bringing that back, or whomever they're staying with. So there's all these other, I guess, uh, beyond the dispensary part itself, there's all these other avenues now that are, uh, uh, I would assume would be more open, um, to, um, to have cannabis products. So I guess, well, I'd love to, uh, I'm gonna try and pull back from, or pull in from the conversation, uh, at, uh, Maryland City District County's Conference, uh, to try to figure out what more we can do in a comprehensive way to address it. Um, and, and though we're, we seem to be limited in by what we really feel like we can do, by what the state of Maryland has given us the ability to regulate, I think we all need to still be as comprehensive as possible thinking about how, what that really looks like.
Absolutely. Uh, Councilman Hastings, I think that's very important. The more information we can get, the better, and the more focus we have. And we're not, uh, sitting back solely waiting for information, continues to be a topic of conversation in our state safety meetings. We do have very specific guidance and regulation as far as medical cannabis in schools. We do not have that same level of guidance or regulation, um, otherwise, again, thinking outside of the schools. It is not permitted in schools in any way, shape, or form outside of the medical cannabis with very specific regulation.
It's still prohibited by MINE, so that's a plus.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
How often do you drug test employees, and what justifies how you do it?
Uh, Dr. Paddock?
Mr. Holloway, we have a reasonable suspicion procedure, so that if somebody is, um, glassy-eyed, stumbling, if they, if they're showing any kind of sign of under the influence, then we go out, and actually, Ms. Miles and her team go out and transport that individual to, uh, local, um, you know, your doc's center or wherever, and have them tested.
So you don't do random drug tests?
We do not do random drug testing because we have the union contracts that are kind of a barrier to that. There was a discussion about, um, drug testing a couple of years ago, and we talked about what we could do is pre-employment, but then, of course, there's a major expense, especially when you're talking about, you know, rolling four, five, 600 new employees every year, and whether or not pre-employment for everybody would be feasible. Um, so right now, we don't have random testing. Um, we've approached the union about it, but it has not been something that they've been interested in.
I guess my opinion to that is who's running the school system? You or the union?
Uh, our Board of Education is where I'm concerned runs the school system.
Other day on that one, Joe. I was looking up the 1,000-feet thing.
Thank you. I thought you'd have more information.
And what it says here, "It is illegal for any person to manufacture, sell, distribute, or possess with the intent to distribute a controlled substance in one of the following areas, on a school bus, or in, on, or within 1,000 feet of any elementary, middle, or secondary school property." And not saying the circumference thing isn't right.
Right.
I was trying to, I was trying to find it.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I don't remember. But I, I was thinking it was property.
Yeah. We work very, very closely with the city and municipalities appropriate to each location to make sure that, that signage is at the correct distance and is comprehensive for the campus as it exists, so.
Yeah, a school that was on, let's say, 30 acres.
Right.
And the school's at the complete other...
Obviously, it can't be a center point, complete diameter, so...
Yes. I'm, I'm thinking it's property, but don't quote me.
Well, um, anything that you wanted to add? We really appreciate this, uh, and the points that you brought with us, very comprehensive.
Absolutely.
And it means a lot to us. It helps us recognize that you all are doing so well over the, over the year, or at least the last quarter, anyway. Even during the summer.
I have one more question. And it's something I should have done this summer. I need, and there's nothing you can answer right now, I don't think. I need a breakdown of how the maintenance effort is spent on the child, where that money goes. Does it go to school supplies, computers? How is that money spent on, you know, you hear maintenance effort per child, you don't spend enough on the child. I need a breakdown of how it's spent on the child. Just an idea what, what that money comes from. Is $1,800, where does that $1,800 go for the children? And just send that to me, please. $1,800 go for the children? And just send it to me, please.
We can give you certainly a breakdown on the local contribution, state contribution, and the federal contribution. And then how, and we're actually developing something through Blueprint, where we'll be able to track that down to the child level. Right now, we have it at the school level, and we also have it per, on a per-child basis. But we're, we'll have more and more accountability regarding those finances down to the student level. MSD is developing that now, where we can get to that level of specificity. But we can certainly provide information on maintenance of effort in general, and how that, how that looks within our overall budget.
When you get the tracking part, that's what I want to be, that's what I'm interested in.
We'll hold off till then.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I just want to thank all these guys. I mean, these are the senior leaders of the school system, and they spent all summer working very hard to make some great changes. And I want to thank Dr. Ennis for being here, and the other board members as well. We, since we were elected in November, we've probably had more meetings than ever before when I've been on the board. And there've been productive meetings, making changes that we think need to be made to make the schools better, leaving things alone that are going well. And then, under all these guys' leadership, we're really moving forward. I'm really excited about the start of the school year. So thank you. Thank you all for having us in to share that information.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane. Yeah, very, very productive. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Hey, one more question. What's the best way to donate school supplies? Is it, is it, because my church does book bags. We put them in bags, and we give them to the kids, you know. Is it, is it a good idea to give directly to the teachers? Is that better? Because, you know, do the school supplies make it to the, you know what I mean, to the kids, and then they disappear?
Our team, our office usually takes those calls. So one recommendation is, if you have a particular school that's in your church catchment area, and you'd like to contact that school administration, and make the donation directly to the school. I also offer our team of school social workers and PPWs. We take in donations and then distribute on an as-needed basis to the different families that we work with at the time of enrollment or through any other processes that we would engage.
Okay.
Are kids still wearing uniforms?
We do not have consistent attire this year.
No.
Okay.
They can still wear, if those are the items, because they look really nice, but it's not a requirement.
Yeah, because I know one time, the problem was uniforms.
There's also a Fresh Start School Event at the Civic Center coming up, where they'll have a lot of those types of donations and...
That's the 26, right?
Yes.
That's the 26.
Where students will be able to come through there. Yes, 12 through 3 on the 26.
We are co-sponsoring that, and we have full capacity to accept more donations. We'd like to give them there.
Absolutely.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you all.